Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Select meeting for June 9th. I'll rise, please. In fact, I'll call up Noah Campion, our Boy Scout from 276, 176, to lead us in the Pledge of Legion.
... the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what is just stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Noah. And you'll be hearing more about Noah in a moment. But first, we'll start with public audience. Is there anyone who'd like to address the Board of Select? Yes. Elthea was already up and jumping out of her seat, so welcome.
Hello, I'm Elthea Rainey, Centole Gate Lane, Simsbury, Connecticut. I'm here on behalf of Simsbury Community Television as a volunteer and also as the newly-elected president. In the past, SCTV has done a bulk fundraising mailing in October. And this year, it was decided to split that up. We would do an October mailing, and then we'd do a spring mailing. Everybody's not getting double mailings. We split the town in half, actually. Sent half out, and then half again. So if you received a mailing and you've already sent in your donation, thank you so much. We really appreciate that. Your donation goes towards maintaining and procuring equipment that we use to film meetings like this, programs down in SCTV's studio, and out and about, things like the Memorial Day Parade, concerts, school events, things like that. We use a very small staff to do that. Everybody else are volunteers. So if you have a hankering to run a camera and film some meetings, we greatly appreciate that. With your support, SCTV provides a platform of communications among the many residents of town. Excuse me. I should be used to this, shouldn't I?
Yes.
I think it's a standing up. I think I need to sit down. Anyway, volunteers provide the labor for the recording of the government meetings and our programs down in the studio. And as many people may or may not have noticed, there are a lot more government meetings being filmed, and therefore, we need a few more volunteers. We would really appreciate that. SCTV needs both donations and volunteers to accomplish its goal to promote community participation in the production of non-commercial programs for its public education and government channels, and to encourage the free expression of diverse ideas and opinions on public-access cable television. So if you can, please send a donation to support SCTV. If you or someone you know wants to become involved in a communications environment, our doors are open. Come on down. Thank you.
Thank you, Elthea. Congratulations to you, and good luck. And thank you, and SCTV, for broadcasting our meeting so folks who can't come down or don't have the time to come down can be caught up on what's happening in town. So thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Joan Cole, 26th Street, Simsbury. On May 31st, 2014, there was a fundraiser at the high school for the music department, which was approved by Principal Neil Sullivan. There were balloon banners placed at the entrance to the high school, banners at the entrance to the cafeteria, and about 20 mattresses were displayed, and many signs distributed throughout the high school parking lot. The fundraising operation organization was CFS, Custom Fundraising Solutions, and they were the distributors of the mattresses that were on sale in the cafeteria. However, Principal Neil Sullivan approved this event without consulting the town on the permitted use of the signs. According to town staff, there were no permits issued for numerous temporary signs, which is subject to the approval of the zoning official. Banners are not compliant and violation of the zoning regulations. This is not the first time that Neil Sullivan showed poor judgment and disregard for town and Board of Education policies and regulations. Several years ago, there was a bullying issue that was ignored for over two and a half years, reaching an unsustainable level, that the parents had to leave town to maintain the safety of their children. Then there was a water pong event at the high school during a teacher workshop where a student entered the building and documented the event, knowing that this activity should not be played at the high school gym with teacher participation. Another event was allowing students to bring skateboards to the high school for senior day that disrupted classes and dangerous during hall passage. There was an incident at Simsbury High School during Spirit Week, causing the pep rally to be canceled. According to police dispatch tape, a person under the direction of Neil Sullivan, principal of Simsbury High School, on October 18th, 2013, asked for police cruisers to go to the high school because, quote, "Senior class is going crazy. They are running through the halls yelling. They are outside of the football field. They are out of control." The entire senior class, end quote. Presently, the high school bleachers have caution tape over a section due to instability of the bleachers. The bleachers have been unstable for over a year. Recently, in the news, there was an incident at Fairfield High School with bleachers collapsing. It appears our high school bleachers have caution tape on them and are being patched, but the stability of the bleachers should be reassessed for stress since students are jumping on the seats, making them unstable. Luckily, nobody has been hurt. How can a principal of a high school maintain discipline with all these issues? Where is the leadership? Was Principal Neil Sullivan... How can a principal of a high school maintain discipline with all these issues? Where is the leadership? Was Principal Neil Sullivan given a performance evaluation over the years? Recently, I had a conversation with Dave Richman, owner of 730 Hop Meadow Street, about his continued zoning violations over the years and a fine of over $20,000 for his refusal to build a permanent handicap ramp on his property and remove the temporary one that is noncompliant in front of his office building. He is being fined $150 a day since November, and the tab keeps getting larger. Dave Richman said that he doesn't care about the fines because he's not going to pay them. Who gave him that impression? Is this politics as usual? I would like to know when Town Attorney Bob DiCrescento is going to resolve the issue at 33 Canal Street as a medical building in an R-15 residential zone. According to the pseudo-town manager, Tom Cook, our town attorney is prompt in giving opinions to the town. However, this issue has been brought to your attention when Representative John Hampton began renting a room at the residence. When will I receive a response to my allegations that the use of this building as a medical facility is inconsistent with the zoning regulations? The town building department had this promotional flyer from Miners Lumber and HBRA displayed in their office. Private organizations should not be allowed to advertise in town hall. Who gave them permission to promote this business activity? Recently, there was an article in The Current Home Finder about homes being built in Powder Forest called Carson Way. Many years ago, when plans were proposed to build homes in Powder Forest, there was recognition that black powder, an explosive manufactured by Ensign Vicpin, was disposed in an area in the Powder Forest. The article says that there are walking trails, et cetera, on the property. Is this in close proximity to the buried explosive waste area? I recently asked town staff for an accounting of the triathlon that took place on May 18th. At the present time, the financials have not been completed, and nobody has been paid. Where is the money? Why the delay? I would like to report that the first 1:00 p.m. closing of town offices on Friday was a disaster. The Board of Education was open until 4:30, leaving the doors open to town hall. The Police Department was open. There was an irate customer at the clerk's office demanding a marriage license. The clerk's office couldn't close until 1:45 p.m. The Selectmen's Office Secretary was working after hours, along with the Deputy Director of Administrative Services, Sean Kimble. Many people ended the building only to find that the town offices were closed. This closing was not thought through, another reason for professional management, and of course, all my comments will be on www.simsber... www.simsbury.com and the Simsbury @ under Joan's blog. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Robert Kalishman, Simsbury. Thank you. For allowing me to address the board and the first select woman. I'd like to bring a few points that are very poignant to what's going on in town. And the first point I'd like to make, and this is an ongoing thing, and I feel that the Public Safety Department, in particular, the Police Department, they're being held hostage by this board and by the negotiators, and it's not right. Case in point, in your agenda, you're mentioning that you're going to go into executive session, and you're going to discuss the pension and the insurance, and you're also going to discuss and review the policies. And it seems to me, we have so... we have experts. And this board appointed a insurance committee for the town. They appointed a pension committee for the town. These people, more or less, volunteer their time, but then again, they're supposed to be experts. They claim they are, and they tell us whether or not it's good or bad for the insurance. What have they done with the Police Department? Obviously, they've made a mistake because they have to re-figure the pension. And here again, they're being used as the whipping boy. I stood before you a month or so ago. I asked for two additional positions on the Police Department. I was totally ignored. Ended up with half a position, and that's going to participate at the schools. And I just feel that you're just beating a dead horse. How much do you want these people to give you? They go out every day. They put their life in jeopardy. And what are we doing to them? We cut their pension, and we cut the help, and everybody tells the taxpayer, oh, we really did a nice job, right? And then one day, somebody... We'll read about it in the paper, I'm certain. We'll read somebody broke into somebody's house, and two people are laying dead on the kitchen floor, or whatever. And if... You just have to review this pension because you're making a mistake with their pension. You owe them money. And there's not one person on that board that will debate me and tell me you don't owe them money, because if you didn't owe them any money, how come you're all going to sit down in executive session and try to straighten it out with their pensions? The other thing I'd like to, on a more vibrant, going with my hand in my hand, to the board, would you kindly, this June, being that it's 70 years, in fact, 72 years, from the Korean War, which started in June 1950, to give the Korean veterans, and all veterans for that matter, recognition and declare June the Korean armistice? The Korean War started in that month. June 28th, I think. Could it take a day? Now, the third thing, it's election time. And I'm going to stay right what I did with Mr. Hampton. When he ran for representative and he sat on this board, I asked him to step down. And I'm going to ask Ms. Cook to resign and let the position be taken care of by the town committee, and she should be replaced. You can't serve two masters. You can't do the Board of Selectman properly, and you can't do the representative from the 16th District, Simsbury, for the State House. Just can't do it. And I think, all respect, all due respect, you should step down. Now, having said that, I'm certain people will say I have an ulterior motive, and let's get to that point. Talked to a few people recently. The poison pen people are out. These are the same people, the same people who... on the same type of election, when it was for state representative, when they attacked the Working Man's Party representative, Deborah Noble, a Democrat, and they took her, and they wanted to tar and feather her. And they filed, wrote letters, poison pen letters in the paper, that she was taking money from the public financing, when the Democrat and Republican were taking the same money. But for Deborah Noble to take it, it was wrong. And at that time, one of the attack artists, and he's still around, he's still attacking people, Mr. Needham, Alan Needham, he's around attacking people. He was the one that signed off on the attacks of Ms. Noble. And ironically enough, I joke, and I have to giggle about it, because Ms. Noble is a Democrat. She's been a Democrat all her life. She's donated money to the Democratic representative time and time again. It's matter-of-record. She's always maintained the support of Olson and the people from the union, the CIO, AFLs. She's always maintained and got the endorsement from them, and I'm certain the Democrats will have the endorsement again. And it's wrong, because these are the people that are attacking people personally. And the other thing that has come to my attention, and I'm going to ask you questions, and I know you're not going to have the answers. When a person has a delinquent tax, whether it's a home, automobile, or a typewriter, the bank is handling it, is my understanding. When these taxes are ignored or scoffed and nobody pays them, how do we collect the tax? How much money do we spend? Now, you're going to say, we won't spend any money. But how much money is spent out of the pocket of the person that's being done to collect that warrant or to collect that tax? Is it 10%, 20%, 50%, 100% plus expenses? What is it? I think it's only right and honest that you tell us what it's costing to collect these taxes, or you're just letting them go. We don't collect them. They just stayed in the vault at the bank. I think you're going to find that the good old boys are collecting those taxes and making the money, and there's no reporting to this board. Or for that matter, there's no reporting to the town of Simsbury.
You could summarize, Mr. Kalishman. That's been five minutes. Thank you.
And I'm going to... And what I'd like to summarize with is this. I sat... I didn't attend the last two meetings, or the last two meetings regarding the senior center and such. I felt that the decision rests with you people. You'll do the right thing. However, I was a little concerned and upset, very upset, when I sat in front of that television. And when I saw Mr. Richmond, David Richmond, whatever he wants to call himself, and whether be it a Republican, because I know his grandfather way, way back from the... grandfather was a big Republican.
Mr. Kalishman.
And when he sat and went out of his way to attack Ms. Cole, and this board sat there, and nobody said he was out of order. And he stood and he made statement after statement after statement that were erroneous and wrong, and nobody... It's good you have public audience, but you can't... you don't have the right to attack a person's integrity. And he sat there and he attacked her. And that's all it was, because it was for personalities. And it's the obligation of this board and the first selectman, when a person says something of that nature, is to more or less say, you're out of order. And it was never said. And as far as I know, you could go, and she's here tonight, you could go and look at that tape, and it's still on the tape, and anybody that's going to look at that tape still sees the attacks that were done with her, all because she said that the handicap platform was out of order, and it wasn't in accordance with the federal regulations, and he was breaking the law.
Thank you, Mr. Kalishman.
Is he special?
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Is he special? Is Dave Rainey special?
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Yes.
Subernarzak, 118 East Sweetog Street. Again, I just wanted to address the board on the redo of the zoning regulations. I'm a little bit concerned because interpretations of redoing them to make them express and redoing them to make them more clear are different things. And so I would just encourage that, since this is being done and it's being... there's a decent amount of money that's been put into it. I think there probably ought to be a recommendation from you guys for them to have a couple of meetings ahead of time with the residents, because there's a lot of concern when something is not predictable, which is what zoning is there for. And if you don't follow the rules, that's another issue. And I'll give you an example of things that weren't followed. And again, I hate to use you as an example, Mr. Payne, but when you were on planning and we had the drainage problem, it was never dealt with. So now I still have the drainage problem, and every time it rains, it irritates me. So I guess my neighbor Anne and I are going to call you, Mary, and find out when that is going to be resolved, because now the town has to pay for it and pick it up because it wasn't dealt with when it was supposed to be. And the concerns that we all have is that stuff like that is going to happen with the redo of the zoning regs. So there's not a lot of comfort out there with what's going on. The second thing is, I know that... I just came in and I saw that they were talking about rerouting the road race, because I guess people are concerned about it. It goes by my house. I'm not that concerned about it, only if I can't have access. And so one of the ideas that you guys may want to think about is making it like one lane, so that cars can get in and out, because I had trouble getting to work the other day. So I don't mind them running by. I don't care. I know people said it was too early in the morning that people got woken up. So there's a lot of different... I guess there's a petition that's going around and stuff, but I think there's probably a happy medium or something, and as long as, you know, using other routes as well. And finally, as far as the police union and the pensions, I really do think those guys... I know we live in a sleepy town, but those guys do put themselves on the line all the time. And I think that we really need to consider, you know, making sure that they're taken care of. I think that the fact that, you know, there's nothing really controversial in the Police Department, we have, you know, a great chief, I really think we probably ought to make sure we reward them. And, you know, my suggestion's going to be that you get rid of hiring him and take his salary and give it to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to address the board yet?
Diane Nash, 5 Berrywood. I've spoken previously and sent letters to the selectmen, but I thought, because SCTV gets so much coverage, I'm frankly amazed. So when you think nobody's listening, they're at home listening. You guys say, you know, you get stopped on the street and people are talking to you. I've had people in the last two weeks speak to me about the parcel of land on the corner of Bushy Hill and Stradonbrook Road and say, please, get it as a priority so that it's not a distraction, again, to some other issue that comes up. It's unfortunate, frankly, that that parcel of land and whether it should ever be built on or shouldn't be built on, distracted from whether we need a new senior center or we don't need a new senior center. I'm well aware that the Open Space Committee is in the process of, and unfortunately, it's about a five-year process at least, of trying to prioritize what open space that the town owns is worthy of preservation and what needs conservation easements on it to restrict some kind of building. I'm also well aware that when you put conservation easements on a piece of property, someone other than the owner of the property, in this case, the town, needs to hold those easements to make them enforceable. So though the Open Space Committee is in the process of prioritizing, the EDC is currently looking at all town-owned properties. What do we own? Where is it? How do we use it? So I'm not trying to jump the gun and say, bring it to you, but I am saying, most people and the public certainly made their opinion well-known, feel that that piece has priority in preservation. Because tonight, you're talking about the Ethel Walker land and the access to the land and the ordinances that are governing the land. I ask you, at a minimum, tonight, to look to the legal documents that need to be drafted on this property, or frankly, any property that the Open Space Committee says warrants protection, to start the process of who are the proper committees, organizations, that would hold conservation easements that would be appropriate for the town, so that when that designation is made, we want to preserve XYZ property, we have the process in place. And in light of the discussion you're having on the Ethel Walker property, it seems appropriate that the process can be wrapped into that at the same time. Not... Most of the time, I think I restrict myself, certainly, as Mr. Kalishman pointed out, not having a discussion with somebody else that you disagree with. I don't even stand up here and say, that person is incorrect. Not that I disagree with their opinion, because we all have our own opinion, but sometimes people do say, as a matter of fact, information that is incorrect. But I'm not picking on a individual tonight. And not to give the political cartoonist any extra publicity, but if anybody saw a little local newspaper, I can't quite understand this... Mr. Grindland, I think his name is. He said, what Sims... where Simsbury residents want to put the senior center? And it shows sort of an island out there, and the rest of Simsbury is on a cruise ship, and it says, NIMBY, not in my backyard. Well, first of all, if he's talking about putting them off on an island away from the town center, it wasn't the Simsbury residents. It wasn't even the majority of the committee members that wanted it out on Bushy Hill and Stradonbrook Road. It was a few people who, in fact, did want it in their backyard because they live in Powder Forest. So I don't know where he got this. And I don't believe that the Simsbury residents are looking down on us seniors and saying, you deserve to be put off on some island someplace. I totally agree, disagree with not only the political cartoonists, but very often, they represent the editorial thinking. So as a board, I would like you to correct them of that bad opinion of the residents of the town of Simsbury.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's all right.
Anyone else?
Nobody.
Nobody. Don, are you ready to go?
Ah, yes. Joan, we're talking about the senior center, so scream out.
All right. No rumbles here. Let's have some decorum here. Let's...
Keep talking.
Talk to the chair, please.
Yes, thank you.
Don Zaler, 1 West Street. Interesting article in The Valley Life, the current issue of The Valley Life. An incident... of The Valley Life. And incidentally, the feature article is about the Avon Senior Center. Okay? Avon Senior Center. And I read from here. I'm going to summarize. The idea was conceived in 1984. Construction began in earnest in late 1986. 1984, '85, '86, two years they started, Avon. Okay? And I'll give this to you at the end of the meeting. And what's our record? In 2010, the Public Building Committee was chartered to proceed with developing plans for a senior center. This is over four years later. Four years as opposed to two years. Okay? And where are we? We have this insipid letter dated May 29th that puts us right back to ground zero on the senior center. Okay? All the work that's been done, down the tubes. I'll go through this piece by piece. The Board of Selectment rejected the senior center at Bushy Hill and Stratton Brook Road. Okay? That recommendation, okay, came from the subcommittee after study, after presentations by the architect. We looked at probably eight or 10 sites in and around, including downtown Simsbury. Okay? Found nothing, nothing that was really appropriate. All right? Bushy Hill was the preferred place. But more importantly than the board's decision was the seniors. The seniors voted for that. Okay? The seniors were requested to poll on it. And they wanted to go out to Bushy Hill and Stratton Brook Road. So you're ignoring what the seniors want. You've got some bleeding hearts that want the seniors downtown. The seniors don't care. Okay? They're happy to go out to Bushy Hill. I would expect that in view of what the board that you appointed made a recommendation in view of what the seniors want, that you, this board, would make a, stand behind them and make a pitch and support what they want. Okay? You could have a nice presentation here, what the architect presented, and convince the people at this public audience so that they're not voting in the dark. And that's basically what they had because there was a lot of misinformation presented at that meeting. In fact, you don't really need a big presentation. All you need to do is show them this. This is Agawam. Okay? The senior center in Agawam. This also is the senior center in Agawam. This is an artist's rendition of what we can do at Bushy Hill. This is another architect's rendition of what we could do at Bushy Hill. And this is what we have at Eno. Now what, is that a tough sell?
Thank you, Mr. Zaler. Thank you for your time.
I'm not done. You gave everybody else plenty of time.
I thought you were done. You get a couple more minutes. Go ahead. I thought you were done. Sorry.
All right, let's go to the next point. The distributed mode, distributed mode, I don't know where that came from. That's really out of fairyland. Okay? Have some of the senior activities at Eno and somewhere else. All right? Here's a calendar of events at Eno. Right? I'm going to give this to you, board, after I'm done. See what you can do about distributing these events. So that when the committee comes back to you and comes up with their plan, you can tell them where they're wrong. And I would caution you that this is only the agenda for Eno as it is now. It does not include all the extra things that could be accomplished in a new senior center, like billiard rooms and a, well, I won't go into details. All you have to do is read the architect's report, and you'll see all the things that could be added that the seniors don't have now. And I'll give you copies of this so you can take a look at that. Oh, okay. Then you want specific recommendation on, there we go here. Oh, accessibility issues. You have accessibility issues. The architect gave you plans. They're all marked off. And accessibility issues is only one part of the problem. The bigger problem is utilization. Is it adequate? And it is not adequate. There's 40 pages here of an architect's report that show you what some of the inadequacies are. You've got window wells that block the lights. So unless you raise the building or excavate it, it's dark and it's dingy. The elevator is insufficient. Are you going to add elevators? The dining area has a low ceiling. Are you going to lower the floor or raise the ceiling? Look at the adequacy. Here's a report, 40 pages. Read it, okay, before you come to this conclusion. Then finally, you want the board to identify the most appropriate site for the senior center. That's been done. All right? So what happens when they come back now? They're going to look at another site? No, do something. Avon took two years. They got on the ball. They did it. Let's, you know, take on your responsibilities, carry forward, and respect what the seniors want to do. Not what the bleeding hearts want to do about bringing, oh, yeah, bringing the seniors into downtown. I visited six senior centers. Six. Okay? Except for Lebanon, none of them, none of them were downtown. None. Agawam, which is the gold standard, is so far removed from town, you can't believe it. Avon, which I just showed you, I spoke to the lady that's in charge. You know how she described Avon? In the boondocks. In the boondocks. Not downtown, in the boondocks. There was a meeting that the architect, a presentation the architect made in December of 2012 that I attended. There were 40 people from the senior center came up from the lunch. After the architect made this presentation, I turned around and I said, okay, how many of you people are combining your luncheon, your visit to Eno with other business downtown? Guess how many raised their hands? I'm going to pause. Think of a number. Forty-some people. How many raised their hands? You got a number in your mind? Six. Six. Okay, so bringing business downtown doesn't look like that's, you know, an objection, objective. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? Thank you all for your comments. We appreciate it. We'll move now to presentations. I've asked our, thank you, Mr. Zaler. If you can.
Freedom of information in reverse.
Okay. If you just, we can pass it along if that's easier for you. That'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Zaler. I will make sure I make copies of this. Thank you very much.
Let's yours.
Yep, thank you. I've asked Colleen O'Connor, our tax collector, to be here tonight. So welcome, Colleen. I wanted Colleen to share an exciting opportunity that the town of Simsbury has to pay your tax bills online. And it will save you time and provide services. And Colleen's here to tell you all about it. So, Colleen, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, Mary wanted me to just give you a quick reminder, since taxes will be due July 1, that you can now pay your taxes online. Very simple. You just go to the website, www.simsbury-ct.gov/tax. There's a button right on that page that says, Pay or View Your Tax Bill. You click that. The only thing I do tell you is that put your last name, a space, and your first name or first initial. And a lot of people call and say, I'm on the website. I can't find anything under my name. Well, if they're looking for a car, they're looking under their name, and the car might be registered under their husband's name first. So however your car is registered, that's how you would have to enter your name. Real estate bills, however the deed is, that's what will be on the website. It's free if you pay with electronic check. So basically, you just need your banking information right in front of you, your bank transit number and your account number. If you choose to pay with a debit card or a credit card, there is a 2.95% fee on whatever you're charging on that. So you don't have to wait in line. You don't have to mail and waste your 48 cents for your postage. We do have a lot of people that are paying online. One of the other advantages of going online is you can register your real estate bill. You can't register cars yet because there's no unique identifier number that's the same each year from car to car. They can't use plates because we can't put that on the website. So you can go register your bill so that you would get an email to remind you that taxes are due. You can go in and you can, even on cars, you don't have to register, but you can go in and you can put a due date of when you want the taxes and automatic pay or schedule the payment. So you might get your tax bill the beginning of the month. You don't want to pay it till the end of the month. Some people put it aside, think they're going to mail it at the end of the month. This way, you can actually go online. You can schedule your payment to have it automatically taken out, you know, at the end of the month. I think the 28th. They won't take it out the last day. I think the 28th is the date that they take it out. It's like three days before the taxes are due. What else? You can also go on the website and you can look up your bills. I mean, the last three years are there. You can print a bill from, right from there, both cars and real estate and also business, personal property, plus your sewers. Please note, too, when you get your bill, if you are going to mail it, there's a Wolburn, Mass. address, a P.O. box in Wolburn, Mass. That is correct. That is Simsbury Bank's processing center for the town. And this is, I think, our fifth year maybe now. We've used that. Works fine. We don't have a problem with that at all. And don't forget, the last day to pay your taxes is August 1. And if you pay them online, you have until midnight. So you don't have to hurry about running in here. So that's that from the tax part.
Thank you, Colleen. That's a good reminder. The state of Connecticut requires that we charge 18% interest. And so oftentimes, there's very good reasons why folks may miss the payment. But as Colleen will tell you, the town has no flexibility in waiving any fees. So even if it's an emergency or there's a very good reason that you haven't paid, the town unfortunately has to charge the interest. And we do collect all delinquent taxes. And we do, we collect all 18%. We do not give any discounts. We do not waive any fees. We do not pay anyone to collect those taxes. Those are done in-house. And Colleen does a great job of collecting our taxes. We have about 99%.
Every hour, 99.4.
99.4% collection rate. So congratulations to Colleen and her staff. A very good job of collecting our taxes. And that keeps the town coffers full. So congratulations.
We also, with mailing, like you said, too, postmarks are acceptable. So if it is postmarked on the first and we don't get it till the second or third or whatever, it is not considered late. It is on time. The problem with that, I have seen people in the past that, you know, go to the post office the last day. They put it in the box. If you're going to wait till the last day, I advise you to walk in, have them stamp it with the August 1 because I have to take that postmark. Or go home and pay online and it's free and you can wait till midnight.
That's great. Thank you. Any questions?
My other little hat, oh, I'm sorry. Any other questions?
Any questions, Colin?
My other hat is that I just wanted to show you the Simsbury beautification. We got our new shirts. So these are the shirts. And then the back, the volunteers. So if you see people around with these, and if anybody would be more than happy to join the beautification committee, we are on the website also. You can just give us a call. But if you see us wearing these around, these are our new shirts. So just wanted to share that.
Thanks. So if you see anyone wearing those shirts, make sure to say thank you. So thank you, Colleen, for volunteering in your spare time when you're not collecting taxes. So thank you. Okay. We're moving to our second presentation. This is a wonderful presentation. I'm going to call Lisa Kareem, our library director, and introduce you've earlier met Noah Campion, who's an Eagle Scout with, almost an Eagle Scout, almost an Eagle Scout, with Troop 175. And he's done a great job. And you're going to hear about this wonderful little free library that Noah built for us. So welcome.
You're used to having me up here talking about how libraries aren't what they used to be. Well, tonight, I'm going to talk to you about our core mission of libraries. And it's promoting literacy and promoting community. And that's where the birth of the Little Free Library came from. It's actually an international movement at this point that started in Europe and has come to America. And our Little Free Library that Noah has built for us so graciously, we were so excited and so pleased that he decided to take this on as his Eagle Scout project, is registered through littlefreelibrary.org. So Simsbury is actually now on the map or will be shortly because it takes about 72 days to process. I go every day and look. So Simsbury will be on the international map of Little Free Libraries with our first Little Free Library here. So I just want to commend Noah for taking on this project and thank him. And I want to also notice and recognize the friends of the Simsbury Public Library that offered the opening collection. The way that the Little Free Library works is that it's stocked with an opening collection. And then ultimately, we would like people to take a book and swap a book out. The opening collection had Simsbury Public Library promotional material inside of it. And ultimately, what we'd like to have happen is for people to submit a book review in their book when they bring it back to the library and swap it out. That will help promote that literacy and sense of community because we're all reading the same things.
Excellent. Thank you, Lisa.
Sure.
And Noah, would you like to say a few words?
So this is our first free little library in Simsbury. It's located in the town hall. It's right out the door. I plan on building a few more this summer, not as Eagle Scout project, but just for the, just for the fun of it. And those ones, I'm planning on placing on the bike path and maybe the commuter lot in Simsbury. I'd like to point out just one thing. The first book taken out of the library was by Mary Glassman. And the author was a Simsbury High School graduate. So I thought that was really neat that happened.
It's really neat. Thank you, Noah. Thank you. Well, let's give Noah a big round of applause. His folks are here, so let's give them a big round of applause. Raising such a fine young man. And we are so thrilled. When Lisa brought the Little Free Library to us as part of our budget process, I'm sad to say it was cut out of the budget. And we didn't have the funding for it, but we thought it was a great idea. And we were so glad that we were able to find Noah. And he's done a beautiful job. You could live in this Little Free Library. It's gorgeous. And it's beyond our wildest expectations. And when it was installed last week, it was so exciting to take out the first book. And Jennifer Weiner is a Simsbury High School grad. And she wrote a number of books, including Fly Away Home, which I have finished and I will return to the library and with my review. I didn't know I had homework. I thought I should have returned it today. But it's, we're really excited. It's, you know, one of the first libraries to offer this kind of program. I think there's a couple other in Connecticut. But this is, I hope that people will come to Town Hall, bring extra books, and we'll think of Noah every time we open the door. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Very nice work. A couple of quick reports. Just wanted to remind our residents that the town of Simsbury, thanks to our Public Works Department, will be holding a hazardous household hazardous waste collection day on June 14. It will be at the Town Forest Garage at 68 Town Forest Road. We are doing a regional collection with our neighbors in Avon, Canton, and Gramby. It will be held from 8:00 AM to noon and will be open to all Simsbury, Avon, Canton, and Gramby residents. This is a really great program. It gives all of our residents a chance to get rid of hazardous materials that they might have in their garages or in their basements without risking other people or the environment. And if you have questions, you can go on the Town of Simsbury Public Works website. Also, after you've dropped off your hazardous waste, you can have a burger on the bridge. Wednesday, June 18, there's burgers on the bridge to support the Old Drake Hill Flower Bridge. We will be celebrating from 4:30 to 7:00 and burgers, hot dogs, live music, and more. The proceeds will go to support the bridge volunteers. And special thanks to all the volunteers who donate their time and talent to making the Flower Bridge really something special. So come on down. And the rain date is June 19 if we don't have good weather. If you want to return to the bridge on June 21, this will be the town's first Simsbury summer solstice at the Flower Bridge from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Summer Solstice at the Flower Bridge from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The Parks and Rec Department is working with a number of volunteers, including the Journey of Yoga, which will be holding free events, day-long yoga sessions, music, children's events. And I want to thank Maggie Rita and the Journey of Yoga for working with the town to offer this free program. We are also in need of volunteers for the Technology Task Force. Special thanks to Lisa Havner, so working with the task force and bringing this to our attention. The committee has been very active over the last year in supporting our town staff and set us on our information technology priorities for the coming years. We do have some vacancies on the task force, and if anyone has any technological background or expertise, we could really use your help and guidance. We also have received a date, the Commissioner of Public Health will continue to hold hearings on the alteration of boundaries of public water supply management areas. The public hearing will be held on June 16th at 1:00 PM at the Department of Transportation, and the opportunities to submit written comments will also be extended as well. Couple of other quick reminders, the Performing Arts Center concerts begin this weekend, June, Leonard Skinnerd on Friday, this Friday, June 13th, and Willie Nelson and Alison Krauss on Sunday, June 15th. Tickets are still available, and you can visit simsberrymeadowmusic.com. And finally, also on Saturday, Simsbury will hold an open house at the Wadsworth Athenaeum. This is a chance for our residents to visit the Athenaeum free of charge from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. You can visit all of the galleries, including the special Rubin exhibit. There are free family guides, a cell audio tour, guided tours will be available from 1:30 and, from 1:00 and 2:30, and tours will include the painting of Niagara Falls by the Hudson River School painter John Kinslet, of which we have a reproduction, so don't think it's worth anything. We hope that some of our residents will have a chance to get into the Athenaeum free on this Saturday. So thank you all for your updates. Our first action aim this evening is to approve the tax refunds. These are reviewed and recommended by our tax collector. This is in the amount, tonight of $835.09.
Move we approve?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is to approve fiscal year 14 budget transfers, and refer these to the Board of Finance. As you recall from our budget discussions, the salary adjustments are being requested for the board to approve. Those include the contingency, which the board had budgeted, and also general fund balance. These were funds in the salary account that were budgeted but were returned to general fund balance and now have to be re-appropriated. Usually the finance director would carry forward those dollars, so the board wouldn't need to take action, but those were indeed budgeted for return to the general fund and now need to be re-appropriated. In addition, as the board recalls, this was a very difficult winter and salt supplies were very short. Fortunately, our staff, Tom Roy, did a great job of making sure that we had the salt that we needed, and that we did have the staff that was needed to protect our residents. But there is a shortage in that account, and we do need to transfer those funds for the additional overtime, and primarily for the additional salt supplies and the cost increases of those as well. We also need to transfer, per the Board of Finance's recommendation, they had asked for audit services, $14,800. Those would need to be transferred as well. We do have a draft report, which I've included in your packets and which is available online. It's not been finalized by the Board of Finance, but we do have a draft. And finally, the Simsbury Farms Subcommittee is reviewing the ongoing operations and recommendations of Simsbury Farms. However, in the meantime, the fund balance needs to be transferred to cover the costs of the decrease in revenue, or loss of revenue, that was anticipated at a total of $234,950. Joe Mancini, our finance director, is here this evening, so welcome, Joe, and he's happy to answer any questions that the board might have. Any questions?
Just a quick one. So the Simsbury Farms cleanup is fiscal year 13, so obviously we don't know what the fiscal year 14 is, so.
Correct.
Are we going to do that like July 2nd, or are we going to, I mean, what's your recommendation?
July is when I'll come to you guys with the first round of transfers. I don't expect all the fiscal year 14 entries to be until probably like August 15th, August 7th, something like that. So, but I can bring Simsbury Farms to you guys in July, and there'll obviously be some audit cleanup for any auditor adjustments. I'll have to come before you guys for transfers for those.
Because this is Joe's first year, I did have him put in the memo how he likes to do the transfers. Joe has come to us with a lot of experience as a finance director. He also did have a long discussion with previous finance directors, including Kevin Kane, who explained his process and how the Board of Finance in the past has made the transfers. I think Joe would like to do some now that we know of and clean those up, and then come back in July, and then once the fiscal year closes, then we'll have to come back in the fall and clean up and make sure that the auditors have everything that they need before they begin their audits. So the timeframe is in your memo as well, so that, because Joe's new, we defer to him as to how he would like to work with the auditors to address Simsbury's books, and this seems to be a very reasonable timeframe.
And just to follow up, so obviously this is a pretty large number, and we've got other items that we already did earlier in the year. Is there any concern with us going up to or over the Board of Finance's statutory authority to transfer?
Not, not really. All right, so your, the way that your charter spells it out, it's Section 809, it breaks it out into three separate components. You guys can appropriate roughly 3% of your budget. It's 1% for any projects that are going to have any kind of money coming back from the state, or any kind of grants, 1% for general fund expenditures, just items that you hadn't planned on, and then an additional 1% regarding real estate purchases, or even, you know, kind of upkeep properties associated with real estate purchases. That gives you about 2.7 million. I think you guys are going to be well, well under that.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve the transfers as requested?
Move that we approve as requested.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Joe. Our next item is approval of submission of a grant application under the local road, Local Accident Reduction Program for the realignment of Nod Road. I want to thank our town staff. We just learned of this opportunity for a grant. We had a quick meeting with the police chief, with Tom Roy, with our engineer, and we looked to see if there were any roads in Simsbury that were not safe and that the town might be able to increase the safety. We did identify one road, that's Nod Road. We worked with Tower Ridge Country Club to address whether they would support the application. They did, and you see the letter in your packet. If you recall from the grant application, they will provide funding up to $500,000. It would require a 10% match for the construction phase of the project. Obviously, this is not something the town budgeted for, because we weren't aware that there was a grant opportunity. However, there's enough lead time that if the town should receive the grant, we could work with town staff to put this in our next year's budget. The town could also, town should not apply for the funds if the town has no, if the board doesn't want to fund the project, obviously, because we wouldn't want to accept a grant and then return it. But this is a significant grant opportunity. All of our staff felt it was a very important project, and it's before the board for review. Any questions?
I have a couple, Mary.
Yep.
So what is, how did we identify this road versus others? How did, how did that happen?
It was really left to the police department, the chief, the lieutenant, the town engineer, and the public works director to really look at roads that they felt were worth the grant opportunity, that could be funded, and also that posed a significant safety hazard. In some cases, you know, you pull the documents and see how many accidents on there. But even in a case where, you know, there weren't significant accidents, there's a lot of cars going off the road, it's proximity to the river, it's the, the number of large trees that are in the line of sight, so there are a number of factors. And town staff felt that this road had the, had been identified as having a story to tell to the DOT that would warrant funding. Some of our other roads that we'd like to maybe go after some grants, we didn't feel would stack up and receive a significant amount of funding, or would be, get priority. So the chief, in conjunction with the other staff, felt that this was the most appropriate candidate.
Okay.
Just a follow-up to that, and Lisa, I don't know if we can do something with this on public safety, but I'd like just to look, I mean, if this opportunity could come up again, and to take a look further at some sort of report that maybe the police department could put together, and we can see what those streets are, and...
Yeah, they do, the chief does do a great job of looking at roads, and we, you know, we could certainly share that with public safety. We've been aware of these grant opportunities in the past, they don't, they're not predictable, and we haven't really had much success getting them in the past. But certainly if public safety wants to talk to the chief about how we go about identifying roads, that'd be great.
Great. I would just point out, it's, it is, public safety on roads is the sole responsibility of the chief of police. They could certainly report to public safety, but we do not have any authority to direct the chief.
Right, that's right. It's not, it's not really debatable.
Correct. It's not debatable. It's not really, I mean, we can do it for information purposes, but it's not within the purview of public safety, it's within the purview of the chief of police.
Correct, correct. Any questions?
Just, I mean, a follow-up, I mean, I mean, we've had a lot of visible accidents around the high school, around other places in town. I'm just, I'm struggling with this one a little bit, without any data or anything as to why this is the spot that makes the most sense. I mean, we've lost high school kids 100 yards from the high school before on that curve. I mean, why aren't we doing that one?
Because there's certain roads that have to fit the criteria, and really, as I said, it's really the chief, and the engineer, and the public works director that determine what is the road that had, would qualify for this grant. Without going into a lot of details, you know, there may be a dangerous road, but there may not be anything that could be done to correct it.
Okay.
So...
That's, I mean, that's fair.
I mean, I'm happy to have a further discussion, but I think it really wasn't on this, the agenda tonight to talk about what other roads might be better, what people think might, they'd like to see, or the road in front of their house or another.
No, no.
Anecdotally, it's really because this is really the staff, professional staff recommendation of the chief of police, and it's really what the application could, the really the best road we felt qualified for this grant application.
And I understand, I mean, I get that there's short lead time, I just, I wish there was a way we could actually talk about this a little bit longer and not have, you know, five minutes of discussion and spend $100,000 that we haven't budgeted for. You know, it would be great to have heard from the chief and see some of that data and have a more robust discussion, I guess.
Well, you know, quite frankly, if anyone had asked, we could have had folks here do a presentation. I was not aware that anyone had any questions. So in the future, if the board members have questions before the board meeting, it would be helpful for me to hear that, so I could provide staff to be at the meetings in order to answer questions. But you're right, if there are questions I'm not aware of, and the board doesn't tell me, I, you know, I can't help you.
I didn't actually get a hard copy of my packet this weekend, I read it online yesterday, so.
You know, obligation of the board to come forward with a request for more information if you need it.
Understood.
We could have a special meeting, I mean, this is certainly an opportunity that I feel we shouldn't have passed up. There is unfortunately a short lead time. Staff did a great job of identifying what they felt was, was an important project for the town, and a significant amount of funds that were available. If the town were to do this project on our own, instead of contributing 100,000, we'd be contributing 600,000.
Trust me, I get it, I get it. I just wish we had more time to think about it and talk about it.
You can table it, and we, I'm happy to meet, I'm happy to have a special meeting if, if the board would like.
Let's have a follow-up question. So this is, the map is depicting exactly the area that's going to be changed. So we won't be near the river area per se, but it's just this...
You'll be straightening the road, and what you'd have to do is you'd have to... That's why it's important for Tower Ridge to be on board, because we'd have to do a little bit of a swap of wind in order to straighten the road.
We're going through the test court, right?
And their parking lot, too. Yeah, part of their parking lot.
These grants are very competitive, we don't know if we'll get it, there's a long lead time, there's also a tremendous amount of design work that would have to be done. And yes, the nature of these grants is, we get notice of them on a Friday, and, and the funds are due, and because staff does a good job of monitoring the roads and being aware of which roads are a problem, and which roads would, we've been very successful putting grant applications in, because we know what they're looking for, and we know how to write a grant application. So it would be great if we had more lead time, it would certainly be great for our staff to have more time to write grants, but unfortunately, when they come across, you either take advantage of them or you pass them up.
When did we find out about the grant?
I don't have that information for me. We emailed it to staff since we came in, and they had, we had a number of meetings to look at what roads would qualify, and I can get that for you, but...
Okay.
Yeah. But as I said, if, if, you know, folks would like a special meeting, talk about it, I'm sure the chief and our staff would be happy to meet with you.
I mean, at this point, I don't know what the board's availability is, and I wouldn't want to stand in the way of safety, so.
I would just say that if we can have the reports come from public safety, and there's something...
There's not enough time, Nancy.
No, 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 I'm saying in the future, I'm not talking about right now, I'm talking about...
There's still not enough time. This grant application...
I was, hadn't finished my thought. What I was saying is, in the future, if we could have the kinds of reports that could come through public safety through the police, and then we know as we go along what kind of roads have issues...
It doesn't work that way. It doesn't work that way. It doesn't, it's... I'd suggest that you put it on the public safety committee so people could understand the process, because obviously there's confusion.
I can simplify this for you, Mary. In the future, it would be great to have whatever data you all talked about for the last two weeks presented to this board in conjunction with the application, versus me having to ask for it on Sunday afternoon, when I assumed we were going to get a presentation.
Listen, if you want the board to come in, I mean, I, we spent hours on this application. Staff spent hours on this application. I could have, I could have a number of, every time we put in a grant application, if the board would like, all of the backup and the conversations, I'm happy to do it.
In the future, in the future, I would like more information, yes.
And in the future, I would ask board members to do their homework and to contact staff and let us know that you need more information.
Yep. I will take the day off from work next time, Mary, and make sure I contact staff.
I want to make a motion to approve this grant application as submitted, or the request to make the application, I should say.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, Lisa.
I just want to say that we have a public safety expert, and it is the chief of police, and it's, it's his purview by state law. And we can certainly look at the data, but at the end of the day, we have to defer to his recommendations, because that's his job. And we could either vote for it or not vote for it, but he is the expert.
I agree with you, but there's no chief's recommendation in this package.
I was just going to say there's no OCC, that he was even in on the letter of recommendation.
Again, if the board has questions before the meeting, it's helpful for us to have that information.
Who is that calling?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is Ethel Walker, next steps in referral to the Board of Finance. The board, the Open Space Committee has been working on Ethel Walker acquisition of, for a long time, and we had a meeting recently where we looked at the long-range plan for maintenance and stewardship. This is, as we all know, the taxpayers of Simsbury approved the final phase of the Ethel Walker Woods, that's 41 acres. Will mean that the town will get the keys to the entire parcel of land when the closing is completed in November. We don't want to wait to discuss the town's role in that acquisition. This is the second-largest acquisition of open space in the state of Connecticut. This is a huge accomplishment for the town. It also is a huge responsibility for the town. Town staff did a walkthrough, we did a walkthrough of the entire parcel prior to the vote, so that we would have a handle on what it is the town will be acquiring. In the course of preparing for the closing in November, we have identified a number of open space improvement and stewardship issues that we feel very strongly need to be addressed. Those are listed, as you'll see on the attachment. One is to develop a short and long-term improvement plan to identify funding requirements. So we now are going to own 500 acres of land with the same staff and the same resources that we've had. That is a huge undertaking. We would like to coordinate the effort with Forest Management Plan. We would like to coordinate the effort with forest management plan. You can't take over 500 acres of open space and mow the grass. You need to have a plan as to how you manage the forests, the vernal pools, the, whether you have a plan of keeping the forest healthy, so that's a tremendous responsibility. When the town did approve the acquisition, there were a number of legal requirements that the town entered into and agreed to. We've had town staff and attorneys, our attorneys reviewing what rights Ethel Walker has and what rights the town has. We've identified some conflicts. So just very quickly, Ethel Walker is allowed to have horses on the trails. However, our town ordinances don't allow horses on town trails. So before we close in November, we have to address the consistency of the legal requirements that Ethel Walker needs to be granted and the town's laws which prohibit what we have legally agreed to do. So it's complicated. We identified that the plan should also address a minimum, if it, this land is now owned by the people of Simsbury, they should know where it is. We should have some trail maps, some trail identification, some topo access. We should have some parking access right now. If you want to hike, it's unclear as to where you would park. There is no identified public parking or access. And we feel before the town acquires the final phase, we really should make sure the public has access, make sure they know where it is, and make sure that the access is safe and easily identified. We also identified that there needs to be signage. We need to have wayfinding signs, directional signs, interpretive signage, permanent signage, warning signs. For example, I just spoke about the equestrian activities that is allowed by law by Ethel Walker, yet anyone who hikes in any of our town land knows that we don't allow horses. So it's going to be very scary when you turn around and you're sharing the path with a horse that you didn't anticipate being on trails. And we also needed to identify rules and regulations. We identified that the, there should be some public information that identifies this as open space so that folks know this is walkable. We also discussed short and long-term improvements, what it would cost and what the schedule would be. Trail improvements, we've identified through the walkthrough that there are a number of paths that are, can't be used because many of those paths are covered by forest debris. So some of those paths have trees in front of them. There, we identified the need for informational kiosks, the question of security and how we're going to patrol those areas. Drainage improvements, we've identified that because the Ethel Walker had used the trails, the drainage actually is, is pretty good. We saw some minor areas where it should be improved. We identified some stream crossings and how we're going to deal with those, some parking issues. We've had preliminary conversations about an outdoor classroom. We've, once we identified, we also identified the need, which didn't make the list, but that would be gifts, how the town will accept gifts. So folks in groups want to be involved. Our intent is to have a number of our residents involved in the planning process and the discussions, and how, what we would do with the naming policy. Right now, the land is not named. It's formerly owned by Ethel Walker, but there is no name, and we know how the board loves to talk about naming policies. We also have had preliminary discussions about an outdoor classroom. Ethel Walker has graciously had preliminary conversations with us about their interest in identifying ways that the students, public students can, and private students can use this wonderful gift that we now own. And we've also contacted the other schools, including Westminster School and the Master School, about their interest in it as well. So there's a lot to talk about. The open space committee recommended that we identify a fund, and they identified that the open space, that the transfer of $480,000 that the town received by the sale affairs firm be sent to the open space fund in order to develop a long-range plan and stewardship plan for the acquisition of the property. This is not before you tonight for a vote. It's before you tonight to begin the public discussion of the importance of stewardship and long-range planning, and to invite that the board of selectmen hold a special meeting with the board of finance to talk about how we're going to address the open space needs of this unique parcel, and to let the public know that we are starting to talk about the need to have a plan for Ethel Walker Woods. So I know it's a lot. The good news is you don't have to vote tonight, but we did want to bring it forward to begin the conversation and get some thoughts.
Do we have a new forest fire plan? I'm thinking with all, I saw some of our shoreline communities had forest fires last summer in some of their open spaces, and I was thinking about our, all of our new open space, and, you know, we have a large volunteer fire department, and I didn't know that it's going to require additional training, additional...
Right. So we have, we have an emergency management plan, and we do have a plan with the, with the fire district and the police, but, but that would be one of the issues that we, we would put on that list of how we respond and...
I just heard some of those other communities really struggled with the forest fires during the drought last year, and it was a serious issue.
Mary, to Cheryl's point, which is kind of related to what I was saying, could we just add liability issues in general?
Yes.
For consideration, because with the horse and dogs on the same trail, just to be aware of what the liability in the forest fires, what's our, because there may be implications with curma.
Yes.
I think we should also look at not just the Ethel Walker Woods or whatever name somebody else decides to come up with.
Is that a motion?
Calling it the other name?
A player to be named later. But we should also look at all of the parcels because we shouldn't just focus here and not be looking at...
No, exactly. And the open space committee has, has looked at that and does, will incorporate that as well, but this is significant, there's a significant amount of funding. We also worked with the land trust on stewardship and maintenance and working with them on combining where we can save some money, and perhaps down the road, having a forester share jointly with land trust, as well as McLean. We've talked to McLean and Steve Payne there, and coordinated those efforts, too. Yes. Excellent suggestion. Other questions?
Just in the interest of asking my questions ahead of time, I'm, I'm not aware or have an understanding of what the current restraints in the open space fund are. What, how was that created? What are the restrictions with the authorization process?
Yeah, and that's the purpose of, of the joint meeting. We, that fund has been in place since the open space committee recommended it, I think in the 90s, early, late 98, maybe.
Yeah.
And it's never been funded. Previous requests by the board of selectmen to put money in that account have not been approved by the board of finance. And so, hence, there's no money for open space maintenance and, in that, from that fund, and so we'd like to revisit that. And since the fund mechanism is already in place, we now felt that there needs to be funds put in it for specific purposes. But at the joint meeting, we would, we have a lot of new members of both boards, so it would be important to revisit what the, you know, restrictions of that account are. All the questions that you just asked, that was already reviewed by previous boards of finances and selectmen, and we can get everybody up to speed on what that is.
Okay. And we would also, because I remember when Mike and I were on planning that we, when we did the subdivision regs, I thought we changed one of the options or...
We did.
One of the options, so you could, the developer could put money, and I didn't know what was the open space fund or another fund, but it was...
It was fee in lieu of open space. I think that, I don't think that the money, again, it would have to be appropriated to the open space fund. It wouldn't go into, go into a general fund, and it would have...
It would go somewhere, and I thought, we talked about the open space fund, so...
But I can get you...
Other revenue sources there, because that would be...
Yeah.
I agree with you. We need to, we need to sit down and have a long-range plan for all the, you know, all the open space. We've talked about it during several budget processes here, and I know prior board of selectmen's. So it's, it's one of our biggest assets in this town.
It is.
Thirty percent of this, 33% of this town is not developed and not developable.
Right.
And that's, that's great. So we should, we should maintain it.
And again, the open space committee, we have asked for funds to go into that account previously to do some of the things that we're now asking to do, and that has not been approved. So there's, there's been attempts, but hopefully this time we'll have a better chance of...
Looks like we got a good catalyst for it.
Getting some long-term planning. Other questions? Okay, great. Then we'll set up a joint meeting with the board of finance and forward the information from tonight's meeting. And we'll set up a joint meeting. Thank you. Next item is review, request to reroute road race events. So over the last events, we've received a number of calls from residents in the area of Terry's Plain Road and Riverside Row. Full disclosure, I am a resident. I am not opposed to the race, so I will defer to whatever the board wants, but I did receive some letters. I think the board was also copied. Well, the letters that came to my office said that the board was copied, so I'll make sure folks get that. But we did, I did speak to Jerry Toner about what the process is, and we felt that because it was early on, we just completed the half marathon race, now would be the time to have the Culture Parks and Recreation revisit whether we want to continue doing these races. We didn't want to wait too long because it wouldn't be fair to the race, the race sponsors. If the town chose not to continue to do these, we felt it was important to let folks know early on. So I bring it to the board because this is the first time that we've received letters opposing the races from residents in the area, and Jerry had indicated that the Park and Rec Commission would like a chance to comment on the concerns and whether to recommend these going forward. Any questions? Lisa?
It might be worth getting an evaluation from Jerry and, actually, economic development committee. We just allocated funds to do a path by iron horse for at least 5K races that would alleviate, and just to get feasibility as to whether those would be race-appropriate and whether we should make them race-appropriate. It seems to make a lot of sense to get them off the main roads and do it through the trails in town.
Yeah.
I mean, having run multiple races in multiple communities, I think there's a way you can probably have a healthy balance where you're not restricting residents from their homes or to their homes and still have a couple-hour, you know, minor interruption. You know, they, they managed to shut down the entire city of DC for the Marine Corps Marathon every year, so I think, I think we can, we can find a way to make this work for the community and for the residents, so.
I just had another comment. I did have a resident call me and also express some concern around the signage that's allowed during some of the races, and so if Culture Parks could also look at some of the policies around when the event is held, what type of signage is allowed, and let us know how they could handle that from a procedure perspective as well.
Very good. Any other comments?
Is there a way to alternate routes so that we're not using the same route every time that they're...
Yeah, I, I mean, it gets complicated because there's certain, with the half marathon, they have to, they have to meet certain requirements for the length.
It's got to be specifically drawn and measured out.
And, yeah, very specific, and timing, and, but we certainly can ask Parks and Rec to take a look at it and then bring a recommendation back here so that folks have an opportunity to comment on it.
That'd be good.
Okay. If I could have a motion to refer the matter to Parks and Rec?
I'll move that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item is appointments. We have a motion to appoint Dennis Philan as a regular member of the Culture Parks and Rec Commission.
Move that.
I'll second that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And next is to accept the resignation with our thanks to Marjorie Winters, who did a great job on the open space committee.
Move that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is to appoint Don Rieger, who will do an equally great job as a member of the open space committee with our thanks.
I'll move that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Our next item is update on the Hartford land use study, and I'll note that Lisa Hevner is accusing herself from the meeting. We had a great meeting of the open space, I mean, of the Hartford study, land study, and we do have a new code that's ready to go. That code will be discussed at a public hearing before the zoning commission on June 16th. Gateway Planning will be here to present the code and answer questions at that time. We did have John McCormick and Hartford, the representatives from Hartford who were at the meeting and gave us an update on their efforts to find a new tenant and a new buyer for the property. They did indicate that the code is generating a lot of interest in the development community. There's a lot of interest in how it is streamlining the process. We have also contacted the state of Connecticut, the governor's office, and also the ombudsman who is working with the town on streamlining the state process as well, and we're, we're hopeful that Simsbury will be part of a new process to streamline not only local, local land use process, but also state process as well. And we reviewed, we will review again after the public hearing on June 16th, what feedback we get and what the process is to move forward. So I wanted to just keep the board apprised as to where we are in the process, since this is a very important tenant for the town. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Can bring Lisa back in. Next is approval of minutes. We have meeting minutes for May 28th of the special meeting. Can I have a motion to approve?
So move.
You have a second?
Second.
Any questions, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Try it again, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Unenthusiastic.
Any abstentions? Thank you. Next item is regular meeting of May 28th. Can I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any comments, corrections?
I have one. On the last page, Board of Education, Ms. Hevner thanked everyone who came to the Tri-Simsbury event and those who attended the Simsbury High School senior art night.[1652.82]